Test, test.
Call this meeting in order for Elkhart City Council. Can we all stand for the pledge? And, uh... Angie, would you lead us in the pledge, please? Standing for a moment of silent prayer or meditation. Thank you. Angie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Present.
Councilman Curry. Councilwoman King.
Here.
Councilman Mishler.
Present.
Councilman Fish.
Here.
Councilwoman Hines.
Here.
Councilman Crabtree.
Here.
Councilman Hanky. President Dawson.
Present. I just want to remind everyone to turn your phones off, or either on airplane mode, or vibrate. Uh...minutes for approval. Mr. Mishler.
Yes, at this time, I would like to make a motion to withdraw the minutes for correction at the recommendation of the council clerk. There were a few errors there that need to be corrected.
Thank you. Is there a motion in a second to withdraw the minutes for May...
Remove.
...May 20th? There's a motion in a second by Mr. Fish. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Are these grammatical errors or factual errors?
Both, I would think.
Combination of both.
A combination of both. Okay. There are no amendments to the agenda, or do you have an amendment, Mr.?
Yes, I would like to propose that we substitute in entirety 24-0-14 at this time with the updated version.
Which is 24-0-14R. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. Uh...okay, uh...
Okay.
Mr. Mishler.
At this time, there is an error on the agenda under proposed ordinance. It's marked as 20-18. It should be 24-0-18. It's not reflected in the actual ordinance itself, just on the agenda, so I make a motion to correct it.
There's a motion by Mr. Mishler, second by Miss Hanky, to make those corrections. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Can I get a motion to reconsider...keep going there.
All right. At this time, I would like to propose to amend the title of proposed resolution. It has stated 23-R-13 to correctly reflect 24-R-13 under resolutions.
Thank you. There's a motion in second by Mr. Hanky in the council discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mr. Mishler.
At this time as well, I'll direct the attention to proposed ordinance 24-0-17 and request a motion to reconsider an amendment to rename. I believe the amendment was to rename it from the Great Elkhart Fund to the Greater Elkhart Fund. I've been informed that the actual title of that fund is the Great Elkhart Fund, and I request that we have a motion to reconsider that amendment so it fits the actual legal title and information in it.
The second, motion, second, second. Council discussion. Mr. Hanky.
So we need to correct our budget books and other...all other affiliates, because it's been the Greater Elkhart Fund identified through years and years, so I don't mind how we end up, just so it's uniform.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. There are no presentations.
Are we counting the number of errors in this packet? Oh, sorry.
There are no presentations. There are no presentations. There are no reports of council committees. Proposed ordinance on second reading. Would you please read proposed ordinance 24-0-12 by title? On me, please.
Proposed ordinance 24-0-12, an ordinance appropriating $200,000 from the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund for unexpected repairs to the city of Elkhart severe weather emergency notification system.
Thank you. Can I get a motion in second?
Both.
I'm going to adopt this. I got a motion by Mr. Treap Tree, second by Mr. Mish...I mean, Mr. Curry. Council discussion. Mr. Hanky.
The last time these were upgraded or repaired...
Last time these were upgraded and repaired...
This...this project has been ongoing since 2011. The replacement's been ongoing since 2011. So there are some signals that were replaced between 2011 and 2014, and then there were several...several others that have been more recently replaced.
So for $200,000, how much is a total system costing as far as replacement and life expectancy?
From...back from 2011?
If that's what we're replacing, or this is just a...an end replacement?
This is an ongoing...this is the end...end of the project. We actually...so we had to purchase new equipment. We had to hire out a contractor for replacement, so that's...that's what this final push, this final payment is for, because everything is replaced and operational now.
So the total package of all since 2011, then?
I can get that information for you. I don't know.
Because if this is $200,000 and I don't know what percent it represents, maybe there's a better system? I don't know, but it sounds hugely expensive if we continuously, and then I don't know how long it's going to last.
Yeah, we can get that information for you. You know, certainly with some of these that were not operational before, we are happy that they are all working now. It's...it's a safety necessity.
Thank you. That'd be good information for all of us here.
Yeah.
So thank you. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Mr. Mishler.
Uh...yes, so all of the sirens are functioning?
Yes.
Okay. Now, how did we find out? Did...is there...is it...when a test is done, are people physically standing there listening, or is it transmitted to a central location? How...how are we figuring out when a siren isn't functioning?
Yes, so for...no, it's not transmitted back. For now, we do have staff members that are out at each location to make sure the sirens are functioning, and that's how we determined on Saturday, the first Saturday of the month, we had staff members out at each of the 11 sites.
In the future, it might be a good idea to see if...
Oh, yes, we're looking into that. We know it's not the most efficient system, but at least we know now that first Saturday of every...every month, we will know if there's a problem as soon as it happens and can get it addressed quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you, Corinne.
Thank you.
Is anyone in the audience open up to the public? Yep. Anyone in the audience open up for public hearing? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? Seeing none, we're turning it back for the council floor. I need a council discussion. Seeing none. Angie, would you do...
Sorry?
I'm sorry, Miss Hanky.
Yeah, I just thought it would be prudent, since this piece of it, and we don't know which piece of it, is $200,000 significant amount of money since we've been replacing or upgrading since 2011. I think it would have been appropriate to have the total package, total cost, life expectancy, to give us a better idea of what we're using taxpayers' monies for, and how quickly we're going to have to replace it yet again. 2011 is some time ago, and if that's when the replacements already started, I don't even know how long the last ones ran. I just don't know. So I think that would have been good information to have.
So at budget time, I think this is in somebody's budget. Please make sure we have that information so it's...so we know it's an ongoing process, what it's cost us from then to now, and what it's going to cost us going forward. It's a great question, Miss Hanky. Anyone else? Seeing none. Angie, would you do a roll call vote on second reading, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye. Got a motion from Mr. Mishler, second from Mr. Fish, for third and final. Angie, would you read this, please, by title, and take a roll call vote, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-12, an ordinance appropriating $200,000 from the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund for unexpected repairs to the city of Elkhart severe weather emergency notification system. Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes nine to zero on third and final.
Thank you. Would you read proposed ordinance 24-0-13 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-13, an ordinance annexing certain real estate commonly known as Elkhart East Areas DNF, intersection of County Road 17 and County Road 6, Elkhart, Indiana 46514, and declaring the same to be part of the city of Elkhart, Indiana.
Thank you. Can I get a motion in a second to adopt this on second reading, please?
Remove.
Got a motion by Mr. Fish, a second by Miss Hines. Council discussion. I think we'll first hear from Mr. Huber.
Um...yes, so last...last meeting, we had the resolution for the fiscal pa...fiscal analysis for this annexation. This is approximately 200 acres. This includes the area on the This includes the area on the southwest corner of 6 and 17 that is significantly, pretty much developed. I think there's one or two lots left in there that's undeveloped. That was, that represents about $35 million assessed valuation as it's been developed out. This also represents a strip of land on the east side of County Road 17, just south of County Road 6, adjacent to the Pheasant Ridge area, so it's the vacant land, undeveloped land on the east side there. And this is also northeast corner of County Road 6 and County Road 17 in, in the, in, where the RV Hall of Fame is. This is the area south of Executive Parkway, so it's still undeveloped. So the majority of this is developed. There's, there is a portion of this that's undeveloped. As I said, it's about $35 million of, of assessed valuation in the developed and undeveloped portions total. As we presented last, as we presented last month, our last meeting, this will, this will cost the city in terms of additional police and additional street maintenance, about $20,000 a year. This will generate over $600,000 a year in new levy and new increment, or, I mean, new, new revenue coming back to the city. So this more than pays for itself with, with the, with the, with the revenue coming in just from the currently existing developed portion, not to mention the portion that's undeveloped. The, the fiscal impact also identified the impact on the surrounding jurisdictions, taxing jurisdictions, based on tax cap impacts. I just want to point out, Oslo Township will see a reduction of about $80 total from this annexation, and Washington Township about $7 from this. So the relocation of Fire Station 6 to the current, to the proposed County Road 6 and, and Ada Drive site will actually allow that, that station to provide more than adequate service to this proposed annexation area and the next one, so.
Thank you. Mr. Curry. Or Mishler.
And to be clear, just as we spoke last time, this is, there's no residential in this.
Correct. This is all commercial and industrial. Both, both of these are zoned. The, the next annexation up next, which is currently vacant undeveloped land, is all zoned manufacturing.
Okay, and this is also a voluntary annexation?
They are voluntary annexations. That's correct. And in fact, the petitioner for annexation is here this evening if you guys have questions for them as well.
Thank you very much.
Who else? Mr. Mishler, Mr. Hanky.
Um, so I had a couple of other questions after considerable calls. I think, I think we just need to make sure that we're laying on the table the impact to others. I think that's a fair question. Currently, on this particular 013, you said there's how much of assessed value sitting there?
34 million in assessed value.
So in 34 million, and how quickly would this annexation go through?
I'm, I'm--
So if this was becoming--
Sure. If we, if we adopt it tonight, then it takes effect.
Okay. And what ti-- what, at what timeframe would the new Station 6 be erected that would actually adequately service that area?
Yeah, I believe that, and I don't have the final plan timeline on that, but I think we're anticipating construction of that. It's in design or finishing design right now, and I think we're looking at a construction next year.
And, and are we confident in the $8 impact? So we're talking about--
Yes, that's the fiscal plan.
Thirty million plus dollars, but the impact to Oslo Township?
Was 80, and, and eight to Washington Township. That's correct.
Is an $8 loss?
Correct. That's according to the fiscal analysis that produced by Baker Tilly. Correct.
That seems hardly probable. I, I don't understand that whatsoever. But I do know then that it, does the Baker Tilly per forma also provide, since they do have a fire levy, the impact, impact to the fire levy alone, separate than the actual taxes?
The total levy, the total impact for Oslo Township is, is an $80 loss.
Eight, zero?
Eight, 79, yes, according to the impact analysis.
I don't know who does their taxes like that, but boy, I'd like to hire them. I just can't imagine. And I'd bet a paycheck that there's no accuracy here. $79, you're giving up 30-plus million dollars of assessed value, and the impact to that entity is 80 bucks.
They're, they're also no longer having to provide services in that space either.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for seeing none. I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience would like to speak with regards to this ordinance?
Ann Jones with JPR. Good to see you all. I'm sure you're all familiar with this development project. We started planning it back in 2000, and it's gone very well. We're working towards what we consider to be the end game. This is part of it, and actually, this, this particular annexation, this first one and the second one, we're all, always planned to move into the city. Obviously, there's no way that these projects could go forward without the city's partnership in water and sewer availability to these development sites. It's really made the area flourish, and we're expecting to see much more. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have. Thank you for considering it.
Any questions for Mr. Jones? Seeing none. I'm sorry. Mr. Fish.
Thanks for being here, and there's a lot of undeveloped land, and I know a little backstory about that strip of land on the east of 17. Are there any entities ready to put some shovels in the ground?
I don't believe that I've heard of any yet. I think the, one of the things that we needed to do is to get this into the city, make sure that sewer and water were ready, designed, and made available. That particular strip on the east side is more of a, a commercial office, that type of thing. Not really industrial. It's kind of narrow for, for that purpose anyway. But I know of none of, I don't know, Pete, if you have any prospects at this point?
Okay.
We're expecting. Always, always hopeful.
It's, it's prime land. I know that somebody will snatch it up. Thank you.
Sure is, yes.
Anybody else in the audience? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Jones. We'll close the public hearing. Return to the council floor. Is there any other council discussion? Mr. Hanky.
All right, so here's the part. I, I want to make sure that these numbers are actual, because it does say it is anticipated that the city will realize an increase in its levy of approximately $608,309. $578,199 net of circuit breaker as a result of this annexation. So I'm having a very difficult time understanding how then Oslo Township is only going to realize a $79 tax revenue loss. Now, if that's in per thousands, it would make a little bit more sense, but the whole county, if we're going to realize $34,578,900 of assessed value, and the total loss to library, school, Washington Township, Oslo Township, and county government is only $23,375.
Do we have that information in our packet?
Huber.
So that was provided in, with the fiscal plan in last, last meeting's packet. I, I, I gave him the information just because he was questioning it, and I had it in the folder. So I'm, Mr. Hanky, I'm happy to clarify that for you as well, but, you know, again, th-- those are the numbers, so.
Yeah, and it differs from what the county provided, and that's my real concern here, guys. It actually lists, if somebody would want those things, that it talks about the assessed value of each location, each property, and the total assessed value, and then the diversion of tax loss to other entities, and it in no way matches what we have in front of us. So that was my concern here. Now, if you're going to guarantee these numbers, I can go with that.
I'm happy to clarify the numbers.
All right, thank you.
What I also will say is that, having served as president of the county redevelopment commission for over 15 years, this is also a tax, this, all of this land is in a county tax increment finance district. So the county can utilize those tax increment finance district dollars to help replace specifically for public safety expenses Oslo Township or, or Washington Township, specifically to help offset those out of that tax increment finance district.
Well, so correct me then, if you've got 15 years' experience, Oslo Township has a purposeful, single-itemized tax levy for its fire department alone, which by law must be funded at 100%, no matter what happens out there. So it would, would indicate to me that that tax levy by percent would have to go up in order to cover any shortfall. Is that how you see it?
I, I believe that, I, I'm not an expert in that. I'm, I'm not the controller. I believe that's accurate.
So that's why I think, because the third district represents predominantly the Oslo Township.
This will have no impact on city residents in Oslo Township.
We pay Oslo Township taxes. So it does impact the majority of my residents that I serve. It does impact them, because I see right on my tax bill Oslo Township levy rate. So there it is. And if I'm going to impact it in a negative way, I would just like to know, how much is that going to be per $100,000?
For the city residents, it's offset by the tax caps, so you won't see that increase.
I do in all of my Concord Township tax bills as well.
Mr. Mishler.
And again, to be clear, this will be offset, Oslo Township will no longer have to provide fire--
That's correct.
EMS services to this annexed area. Correct?
That's correct. They won't, no longer provide any of those services. Correct.
Okay, thank you. And do we automatically take over, or is it a phased-in approach when it comes to providing services?
I believe we're mandated by, by law to start initiating services within one year after annexation.
Okay, so it's a phased-in. Thank you.
Within a year, yeah.
Any questions? Mr. Hanky.
So while I believe in annexation of a city, I do know that Oslo Township has been a great partner with us. They were second on scene for the fire behind Walmart. They, they cover us in many ways. We cover them in many ways. It's been a good relationship. But any tax offset, any tax loss, and I realize we have to provide services out there most immediately after annexation, but we don't have Station 6, even the groundwork done. So we can say it's out there, and we can say we're going to be on time, but the reality is, if Station 6 is already on a run, it's got to come from downtown, and our, our medic services come from Main Street. So we just have to understand what we're putting in front of our systems, and they're going to have to maintain that balance. There's $35 million worth of property out there. They have to be protected now. We just said that. So that's number one. Number two, we can keep whittling away at Oslo Township, but they also have to survive, and they have to provide a fire and ambulance service to everyone else. So we keep taking pieces of their revenue. By the way, all of our annexation is northeast, and there's a reason behind that, and we're eating them up, and we're taxing us, and the ambulances that we count on for our nursing homes and assisted livings. We're just expanding the property immensely, and I realize we got a Station 6 coming up, but it's not here. And we're asking for immediate annexation. I would think they would want to be somewhat simultaneous, or we would work out some form of agreement with Oslo to help cover us at an expense, until which point our fire station is built and we can meet those standard run rates. I'm concerned what we're doing to their budget. The $8, I, I just, I have a hard time with that one. And since if I didn't have other documents from county as of last week, I couldn't say much. But having those documents, you got to say, boy, this is not matching at all. I would love to see it developed. I would love to see it in the City of Elkhart, but let's just do it responsively, and let's work with our neighbors Oslo Township.
Thank you. Anyone else on council? Angie, would you do a roll call vote on second reading, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky. President Dawson.
Aye.
Third and final.
Got a motion from Mrs. Hines, a second from Mr. Mishler. For third and final, Angie, would you read this by title and do a roll call vote, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-13, an ordinance annexing certain real estate commonly known as Elkhart East, areas DNF, intersection of County Road 17 and County Road 6, Elkhart, Indiana 46514, and declaring the same to be part of the City of Elkhart, Indiana. Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines. Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky. President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes eight to one on third and final.
Thank you. Would you read proposed ordinance 24, Mr. Mishler?
Due to publication of the amended-- Oh, you want to do that first?
Let's do that. Let's do that first. Would you read proposed ordinance 24-0-14R by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-14-R, an ordinance annexing certain real estate commonly known as Elkhart East, area A, northwest corner of County Road 4 and County Road 17, Elkhart, Indiana 46514, and declaring the same to be part of the City of Elkhart, Indiana.
Mr. Mishler.
Yes, thank you. Due to the substitution in entirety, I believe this has caused a need for a publication, a rep publication, so at this time, I request that we table 24-0-14R at this time.
There's a motion to table. There's a second by Mr. Hanky. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. It is tabled. Would you read proposed ordinance 24-0-15 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-15, an ordinance appropriating $1,457,243.75 from the general fund to the others' funds account and authorizing the controller to transfer the funds to the local road and bridge matching grant fund.
Thank you. Can I get a motion in a second to adopt this on second reading?
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Hanky, a second by Mr. Crabtree. Council discussion. Seeing none, we'll open it up for the public hearing. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak? Seeing none, return it back to the council floor. Mr. Hanky. Got you. Who's going to, Mr. Hanky, ask some questions? Could you shut that door back there, Jameson, please? Introduce yourself. David, David. Introduce yourself.
No problem. Jeff Schaefer, Assistant City Engineer.
David.
Certainly. And this ordinance goes along with the next ordinance, which better explains that. We did, this ordinance is part of the receipt of a Community Crossings matching grant that we received. This matching grant will provide funding for resurfacing four streets in the northwest industrial parks, the east industrial parks, and West Beardsley Avenue from Nappanee Street to Main Street. I can provide you a list if you'd like, but that's the general areas. That's correct. Sure, it's-- It is the industrial properties east of Edwardsburg, west of County Road 7, and north of the airport. So Dexter-- Nor, on the north side of County Road 6. Dexter, Lillian, Wade, Thorne, that area. It's also Airport Parkway, Paul Drive, Jamie Street, Stephen Court, Gateway Drive and Gateway Court, Glenview Drive. I might have some of those suffixes. Yes, sir. So this is Middlebury Street itself, from County Road 15 to County Road 17. Verdant or Verdant Drive, depending on where you're from, both north and south of Middlebury Street, Hoffman Street, Green Court, and Patricia Court. I believe that covers it. And then the last one, obviously, is West Beardsley from Main Street to Nappanee Street.
No, I appreciate the explanation. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll open it up to public hearing. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak with regards to this ordinance for the public hearing? Seeing none, return it back to the council floor. Council discussion. Seeing none, Angie, would you do a roll call vote on second reading, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky. President Dawson.
Aye. Motion for third and final, please?
Will move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hines, a second by Mr. Crabtree. Angie, would you do, read it by title and do a roll call vote, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-15, an ordinance appropriating $1,457,243.75 Proposed ordinance 24-0-15, an ordinance appropriating $1,457,243.75 from the general funds to the other funds account and authorizing the controller to transfer the funds to the local road and bridge matching grant fund. Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky. President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes nine to zero on third and final.
Thank you. Would you read proposed ordinance 24-0-16 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-16, an ordinance appropriating $3,300,000 from the local road and bridge matching grant fund for the 2024 grant-funded contract paving project under the Community Crossings Grant Program.
I get a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Crabtree, second by Ms. Hines. Council discussion. This is a partnering ordinance to the one we just passed. Mr. Hanky.
Yes, I just want to make a clarification here. So the total project, there's two different pieces, two different grants, is that what we're saying? But it's the same identified roadways?
Jamie, our city city controller, for the record, the, the original ordinance that was just passed is the city's local match associated with the entirety of the project. Per the State Board of Accounts, we're to transfer the money in its entirety, funded in its entirety, out of the local road and bridge matching grant fund. So this is just a companion component to give us the, the, 100% of the funding necessary for the project.
I think the bigger point to make is the northwest industrial parks along Edwardsburg Road. Is that your district, Mr. Mishler?
My district. I'm not sure.
The map is silent.
I know, but whose district is that? Councilman Crabtree's, I believe. Crabtree's. It's split between us. All right, Middlebury Street, is that yours, Dwight? Okay. West Beardsley?
The northeast, I think, is yours, isn't it? The northeast would be yours.
Yeah, the one that where the money comes from, but the, the new pavement doesn't go. That's the one I was kind of referring to.
Thank you very much. I'm not sure what your point is, but thank you very much. Any other council discussion? Seeing none, I'll open it up to the public for public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? Seeing none, return it back to the council. Council discussion. Seeing none, Angie, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Third and final. Motion for third and final. Got a motion by Mr. Crabtree, second by Mr. Fish. Angie, would you read it by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-16, an ordinance appropriating $3,300,000 from the local road and bridge matching grant fund for the 2024 grant-funded contract paving project under the Community Crossings Grant Program. Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes nine to zero on third and final. Before we move on, Councilman Hanky, I'm getting complaints on Facebook that they cannot hear you, so please make sure your mic is turned on and that you're talking directly into your microphone, please.
Thank you. Would you read proposed ordinance 24-0-17 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-17, an ordinance appropriating $820,000 from the Great Elkhart Fund for the 2024 Aspire Elkhart Targeted Infrastructure Improvement Projects.
I get a motion and a second. Got a motion by Mr. Mishler, second by Mr. Fish to adopt this ordinance. Council discussion. Mr. Irwin.
Evening, Council. Tori Irwin, Public Works. So this ordinance is for an appropriation to do four, basically four infrastructure maintenance projects. The first one being resurfacing of County Road 6 from Johnson to Oslo. We are jointly working with Elkhart County to fund this project. The limits on County Road 6 go in and out of the city. So this, we are jointly working with them and have come to an agreement to split the cost 50/50 to resurface that section of County Road 6. In addition to that, this ordinance passes funding for the replacement of the railroad crossing at County Road 1, replacement of the Gausslot parking lot pavement. When we did that project in 2016, we put impervious concrete in order to have a green solution to the stormwater, because that was a CSO project. The stormwater green solution got us a reduction in the interest rates at the time and the loan, so we were happy to do that. Unfortunately, the salt and the plows and the concrete pavement has, has not held up, and it has basically rubbleized. And we had an incident there last winter. We need to get that removed and replaced with regular old asphalt. And finally, along Lexington Avenue, we have some guardrail that is falling into the riverbank and not serving the purpose that guardrail serves, which is to keep the vehicles out of the river in the event that they need it. So we need to replace that.
Thank you. Any questions for Tori? Mr. Hanky.
The railroad upgrade, is that part of the Patriot Railroad system?
It is, yes.
Okay. And what was the total cost, either of that one specifically or all of them jointly?
All of them jointly is approximately $1.2 million. It was roughly $200,000 per crossing, and we did six of them.
And that came from all tax funds. Did the Patriot group owner pay for any of it?
They did not, but they did provide the contractor that did all of the work.
Wait, and then do they bring in what level of revenue to the city? What is their purpose?
That's a question that I cannot answer, Mr. Hanky.
So they, I'm just saying, they, they take, they didn't save money, put money aside, bill it in to maintain their railroad crossings. Not only then do we get to stop and wait on those trains to go through, we also have to pay. And then personally, you know, I've had a couple of tires replaced because of those crossings. And then we get to also spend tax dollars to fix their crossings. We're not the owner of them. We're just paying and we're being the responsible party. So I think a fair question, either Mr. Huber or someone can tell us, what is their direct or indirect tax benefit to the community that they're taxing and taking money from?
Thank you. Mr. Mishler.
Thank you. The asphalt you mentioned, is that utilized in any other city lots or anywhere else?
The previous concrete you talked about.
Oh, the previous concrete? So we, we actually do have one other lot in the city, and it is near the Blazer Railroad Crossing there, off of Waterfall, I believe. That is a not very highly volume-used lot, and so that, that pervious concrete has actually held up just fine, and it's been in there since pre-2010. So we're not entirely sure, other than usage, why this lot wasn't able to hold up like that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tori. I'll open up public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak? Seeing none, return it to the council floor. Any other council discussion? Seeing none, Angie, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines. Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Got a motion for Mr. Hanky.
Second.
Second for Ms. Hines for third and final. Angie, would you read it by title and do a roll call vote, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-17, an ordinance appropriating $820,000 from the Great Elkhart Fund for 2024 Aspire Elkhart Targeted Infrastructure Improvement Projects. Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky. President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes nine to zero on third and final.
Thank you. There are no ordinances or resolutions referred to committee. Tabled ordinance 24-0-10 remains tabled. Would you please read ordinance on first reading, proposed ordinance 24-0-18 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-18, an ordinance amending the zoning map created pursuant to ordinance number 4370, the zoning ordinance of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, as amended to rezone 3,500 Lexington Park Drive, Elkhart, Indiana, 46514, from M1 Limited Manufacturing District to B1 Neighborhood Business District.
Thank you. If there are no objections, we'll pass this on to second reading. Would you read proposed ordinance 24-0-19 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-19, an ordinance appropriating $3,125,000 from the Economic Development Income Tax Fund to the Building and Structures Account for the acquisition of the, of property for development as a combined public safety center for the city's police, fire, and emergency communications departments.
Thank you. This will be assigned to the Finance Committee. Would you read proposed ordinance 24-0-20 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-20, an ordinance vacating North-South Alley between lots 180 through 182 of Beardsley's Fourth Edition to the city of Elkhart, a public way within the city of Elkhart, Indiana.
Thank you. If there are no objections, this will be passed on to second reading. Would you read proposed ordinance 24-0-21 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-21, an ordinance approving a major amendment to the Cassopolis Park PUD, a planned unit development under Elkhart County Commission Ordinance Number PC87-41, by increasing the permitted lots under Cassopolis Park PUD with an outlot for further development as a casual restaurant.
Thank you. If there are no objections, this will be passed on to second reading. Would you read proposed resolution 24-R-13 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-
Resolution. Resolution.
Oops, it is. Yep. Proposed resolution 24-R-13, a resolution of the common counsel of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, authorizing the transfer of $50,000 from the full-time account to the contract services account of the Elkhart City Clerk.
I get a motion and a second to adopt this resolution. Motion by Mr. Mishler, second by Mr. Fish.
Good evening, Council. I'm here to answer questions. I tried to give you as much information in my cover letter as I could, but I'm here to answer any questions you may have. And I will say that I will be requesting that the part-time position become permanent in my upcoming budget for next year. I didn't foresee that I would need that for this year, but it will be in my budget.
Thank you. Questions for them? Mr. Fish.
Thanks for being here. And so this is just your transfer, but this is for the part-time employee?
Yes, sir. What, what it is, I had, I had one part-time vacancy that was already approved by the council. We are adding the, the second part-time, which necessitates the rest of the transfer to back up the council clerk in cases of absence, vacation, et cetera. And we need somebody that can just step in and run the meeting.
You're gonna, you, you think you're, you're gonna need that person permanently based on the volume, the workload, et cetera?
I do. I believe that the council clerk's job is not a 40-hour-a-week job. And these days, people do not want to work weekends. They do not want to take it home. We have been blessed with other council clerks that didn't mind doing that and putting in many, many hours on their own time and getting paid overtime. That doesn't seem to be as much of an incentive as it used to be to just get paid. They would rather have the time. And if we do comp time, then, okay, so they do the comp time, and then they're gone, and then they get further behind. So it really needs to be, you know, a backup position. The other concern that I've heard is like scheduling of committees. Tonight, there were things put to committee, and you don't know until tonight, and then that chairman may say, I want to hold a meeting on Wednesday. Well, people do plan ahead for their different things, and I like having somebody that I can grab and say, if one's not available, the other one can go in and do it.
And this is proposed in your budget, there'll be benefits that come along with this accordingly?
I don't think part-timers get benefits.
They offered anything at all?
I, I don't, I, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, you can finish answering.
Oh, I, 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 not that I'm aware of, sir.
Okay.
No, they're not.
Good. Thanks.
Besides.
And how many hours is part-time hours?
Right now, it's at 20. I will be requesting 25 in my budget. The, the council clerk's workload, it, it's like feast or famine. When you guys are in budget hearing and you have an eight-hour day, and then you have council meetings and committee meetings, I mean, it just, it gets crazy. So I'm going to request 25 hours, but right now, it's for 20 hours.
Mr. Hanky.
All right, so I walked into this really questioning what in the world we were doing, because I was hopeful that we weren't paying somebody $50,000 to locate for us two part-time positions. So what you're actually doing is covering the salaries thereof. And so that, that hourly rate compensation is what?
Through personnel partners. One of them is approximately $31, and the other is 20, 27. But we have to pay a fee to personnel partners along with the salary. So that, it will not be for that amount of money, and I will make sure that I give you details on what I believe the job should pay, but...
No, I, I get that. I just wonder, is it really necessary to go through personal services since you're going to have to do some on-site training to begin with?
The reason is-
You do have seasonal people, you do have part-time, you have summer school teachers.
Yes, and I, I will give you a couple of explanations for that, Mr. Hanky. Number one, the council clerk position is training-intensive. It is not just one task every day. There are so many moving parts. I don't want to retrain someone every summer. We went through indeed with human resources, and I did not get a candidate that would fill the position. I need somebody that's interested in staying, because we're going to put all this time into training. It's just not an easy job to train for.
I, I get that. So I'm just trying to be open about my financial side of this thing, because you're going to pay a premium going through a, a secondary service, and then if you want to hire that person, you also have to pay.
I, I intend, unless I'm given better advice by the controller, to let that contract run and not buy it out and then start paying that person. I've talked to both the ladies that have come to me through there, and I said, this is my plan. I don't want to pay out a lump sum and then start paying you. I don't, I don't really think that's frugal.
So we're, we're going to ongoingly pay a higher rate because we're going to, we're going to continue to pay personnel-
Because I have to pay a certain amount of hours either way.
Yeah. Well, but your hours are cheaper in-house than going through that service out there, because they have to add on cost per hour, right?
Yes, sir. But what I'm saying is, I believe it's like 580 hours that I, that before I can hire them or I have to buy out that contract. My position is, well, if I'm going to have to pay for the 580 hours, why would I then start paying them taxpayer money on top of that? To me, that would be a double fee. So I'm, I intend and inform them to let the contract run, because I've got to pay those hours, and when that, when that expires, we're, I'll be done with them.
So you're saying the current rate that we pay is 37?
No, sir. It's one, for one, it's like 31, and for the other part-timer, it's 27.
27.
Mm-hmm.
And then if they were in-house employees, Elkhart City, part-time employees?
It would be like 20 and 25. But then again, we would have to pay the employer taxes. We would, you know, that side of things. We would have, you know, that's, there's no benefits, but the employer taxes equal what the-
But part-time. So that's all I was after is-
Sure, sure.
Really to compare apples to apples. We would really need to see what would the in-house cost to have a dedicated person comparison to someone that we believe we've trained, made quite an investment in, because, you know, working, especially for this council, is, is a pretty heavy task.
Yes, sir.
Just for one of us, David.
And so with, with that said, the issue with it was, how long and then do the cost comparison? Because if you're going to have this ongoing, I'm not sure which way is beneficial until you do the comparison, the cost-benefit analysis. But I take your word that you know, I mean, you've done your homework.
Yes, sir, and I, I've met with the controller.
Besides.
How much longer is the contract?
We just started within the last few weeks, so- We just started within the last few weeks. So-
So the, what's the, what's the timeframe of the contract?
I, I will get you that specific information, but I believe it's 580 hours before we can hire them without a buyout of that contract. And I will get that information for you.
Thank you. What is that?
I'm sorry?
Don't do that.
President. So I'm just wondering if, had we known this early on, you know, maybe we had a little bit room to play to actually hire you people because if this is gonna be an ongoing process-
I, I will tell you the level of candidates that I was getting. We tried that. We went with Human Resources. And I was getting a lot of resumes that, I don't know if people know when their resume has been submitted, but they were not qualified. The two that I've gotten from Personnel Partners, both have a legal background, both have a ton of administrative experience, both of them are good typists. And so I just tell you that the level of candidate that I have with Personnel Partners. And the other thing, Mr. Hanky, is if for some reason it doesn't work out, I can just request somebody else.
Good point. I was just looking at, you know, good typists-
Yes, sir.
... and I thought, I had to make a comment because didn't we do a bunch of-
All right. Thank, thank you, Deb. Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes.
Thank you. Just helps goes through the screening process. So the, the chart, it eliminates you going through different other candidates, like you said, and they have a process, I'm sure, testing skills and all that to know that they're qualified for the job.
Well, we also interview them. So-
Right.
They send us what they feel fits our need as our candidate skills. We interview them, and then they fill out a timesheet with Personnel Partners. We get an invoice. So they're not on our payroll right now. They're not on, you know, that's why the need for the transfer. Because in order to be in, in good compliance, I need that to come out of a, a contract or personal services line item to make it clear.
Thank you. Mr. Mishler.
Yes, thank you. And thanks for, for being here, Deb. My question was, will this position solely focus on the council clerk responsibilities, or if the, if you get overwhelmed with things as well, will they step in to assist you with it?
Originally, they will, until they are fully trained, it will be 100% council. Once that is done, just like every other employee in my office, they will need to help if we're short lunch hours to answer the phone, you know. But it would mostly be covering phones during lunch and things like that. They won't be actually doing court work.
I didn't know if we were still archiving things. I know that was a process for a while.
Yes. And my archivist is amazing, and she's doing a wonderful job. And we even have other cities coming to her to see how we've arranged things, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Deb. We're gonna open up to the public, pub, for public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this resolution? Seeing none, we'll turn it back to the council. Any other council discussion? Seeing none. Angie, would you do a roll call vote, please, on this resolution?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. We don't have any vacation hearings. Is there any other new business? Mr. Hanky.
I did want to make sure that we keep on the radio, radar, the Patriot Railroad crossings. And I, I would hope that before we keep going down this road, that we would determine their value in our community because there's definitely now a measurable cost. And we just want to know, you know, the purpose behind that. Who do they service? Should there be a user fee so taxpayers aren't paying for something that has little or nothing to do with themselves besides crossings? One that, you know, it's been a long, long, in fact, I don't even know a mayor that has done this much street work. So it is pretty tremendous and pretty impressive, as long as we continue our ability to fund such things, having all of these streets, even though the fewest that are paved are in the third district. It's nice to see that some of these roads that have been so bad for so long are being managed. So that's a big deal. I would ask that we would be more consistent with code enforcement. Cars parked in yards are becoming more commonplace. That's not a good sign for anyone. I would suggest to you, in my district, Beardsley, I've called them in multiple times, but Prairie, and those that go into the tree lawn because parking is difficult, we're gonna have to come up with a more long-term correction. Chief Melanase, thank you. I've called you a couple of times to resolve a couple of issues. You were right on spot. Thank you for that. And I would also say that I've had a couple of incidences where I've called Police Department for incidences within our community while driving. Wasn't my driving, mind you, it was somebody else's this time. And they were very quick to be on there. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other new business? Mr. Mishler.
Yes, thank you. I've received numerous compliments for the Fish Fest that happened this past weekend. And I want to thank both the Environmental Center and the Parks Department for that, as well as the reopening of the, the tower down there at High Dive. You know, we have some great things going on in our community. We have the ongoing concerts at the Public Library that I encourage everyone to attend, and Jazz Fest coming up before too long as well, and Rhapsody before that. So our community continues to grow and thrive, and it's just great to see.
Thank you. Any other new business? Mr. Mishler, or Mr. Fish?
Yes, thank you. Once again, Jameson, thank you for a great, great weekend. I personally greeted over 500, I'm sure, over 500 people at the Fish Fest because they all came to my tent to get the rods and reels. I got a few responses on emails and a couple of phone calls, but the, the thanks came right on the ground at the tent level. And it was a tremendous event, and of course, the dedication was a cherry on top. So Elkhart continues to show its love for what we're doing by showing up at, at our parades and our parties and our festivals. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Curry.
Yeah, I've been getting great comments about the Pemaran slash Pemaran Pavilion new parking lot. You know, our, our crews did a great job on that, and it's been a long time. We had water flooding problems, so it was a total reconstruction, and it just looks so good for our community, and it's gonna serve the community well. And we appreciate that.
Thank you. During Jazz Fest, we will be celebrating Alan Stright. The mayor will be doing a presentation in the City Day Room on June 20th, that's that Friday, I think it is, June 21st, June 21st, that Friday from 6:30 to 8 at the City Day Room. So I want to invite all the public to come out and celebrate with Alan because he's done so much for us throughout the city and especially with the Jazz Fest. He's done outstanding job. So thank you. Reports, borderworks, mayor, departments.
Hi, Councilor Tori Irwin. I just wanted to extend an invitation to you this Thursday at 6:00 PM. The utility will be hosting our annual presentation at the council. If you would like to come early at 4:30, we would be happy to give you a tour of the incomplete construction of the Wish for Treatment Plant expansion. We're also accepting donations to finish that project, so. Thank you.
And finally, you know, having the railroads replaced and smoothed, drive over is exciting for everyone in the community. We received some good news today. Everyone's been asking about the Blazer Richmond Waterfall Crossing, which was not part of the six that we were doing. We found out today that, you know, the administration has been working with a railroad. They've been putting in some applications with the FRA for grant money. They were able to receive more grant money for that railroad crossing. That railroad crossing is, and finally, the FRA has given all of the approvals necessary for them to get started. So that project is going out to bid next week by the railroad. They'll be getting a contractor underway. And fingers crossed that by August-ish, we could have a new railroad crossing there. So we're gonna, we're gonna coordinate with them and get that underway, so.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Reports.
All right. Good evening, Council. Jameson Zarnicky, Superintendent of Parks. Want to say thank you to everybody who showed up for the High Dive Tower. Thanks for coming to support our events as well. As you noted, and as we've all seen, summer is kicking off. There is no shortage of things to do in Elkhart. If people say it, they're not looking. And I'm proud of all my team and the staff that we've been working alongside with to make the updates, do the hard work. And I think the residents are taking notice. I'm really excited because I think this is just the beginning, and we have a lot more planned that's coming. So stay tuned for the summer. But I did want to say, for Rhapsody Arts and Music Festival, we have that coming up, as noted, encourage people to come out and volunteer. We have a few more shifts that we need for some bridge greeters. That helps us count our numbers so that we're accurate. And at the same time, we have something new. This year, at 12 o'clock, the full festival will open, including the lunch vendors, all of our food trucks. And so we encourage you to come out for the first bite, kicking off at 12 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you, Jameson. Thank you.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
I'd also like to say thank you for all of those who attended the State of the City. It was well-attended, and the, let's call it the theme, was quite frankly, moving forward on the Aspire Plan. And I know you've seen many ribbon cuttings, many publications that have gone out in a press conference forum. I think it's very important for us to first alert our residents of, of what's going on and, and how to participate and engage. Secondly, I think it's important for our crews who work diligently on these projects to be recognized for what they have done. We've talked ad nauseam in the public space about the Johnson Street Project, which was a wonderful project. We spoke to it, I think, in the last council meeting. But that was a project that was brought to the administration when we asked for them to reach a standard that's higher than what they have currently or previously operated on. And they came back and said, "Mayor, I think we can do this for a whole lot less, a whole lot quicker," and using our crews. And when we examined the cost relative to the efficiency of doing it, it turned out that was true. The Pemaran Park, parking lot, was in the same vein, done within budget, not asking for an additional appropriation. And those are the kind of things that make you say, "Thank you." And so when we cut a ribbon, we are not trying to take a lap. What we're trying to do is make sure that we're making people aware of the fact of the work that all of you are doing and the work that the staff is doing in order to make our, our community, Councilman Mishler said, thrive. But we want to continue to grow in those areas where quality of place, quality of life are necessary, and we're going to be having additional ribbon cuttings along the way. Councilman Hanky spoke a moment ago about the road projects that we have, that we've undertaken, and the ones that we have currently in the funnel. Believe me, we are working diligently with the Controller, as well as Mike, and the, in the Economic Development in order to make sure that these projects are fitting within the, the construct of Thrive and Aspire and taking it to the next level. And so these are the kind of things that are important in a timely way in order to do these things the right way. So I want to say thank you. And that's what the State of the City was about this particular year. We're gonna continue to do State of the City offshoots. I'm gonna speak to service clubs. We're gonna make sure that we're engaging the public so that we can continue to gain partnerships all over the city to join us in what we're trying to accomplish. That's a part of leveraging the investment in order to create the, the kind of engagement and relationship from all of these different constituencies and stakeholders throughout our city. So thanks so much for attending. And as I think I heard Council President Dawson say earlier today, that Friday was one of those days that the city was buzzing. It was a wonderful, kind of, an evening in which it was warm enough to be out without a coat and, and a jacket. And people were, whether they were on the rooftop over on Jackson Street, or whether they, or whether or not they were downtown, it was buzzing. And they were walking and looking for and having, actually not looking for, but having things to do, and were pretty excited about it. That kicks off our summer, and we're headed towards Jazz Fest in the, in the upcoming weeks. We had Rhapsody this particular week, let's not forget. Rhapsody is one of our largest events in the summer, and it used to kick off our summer, even though Cinco de Mayo kind of stepped into that space with a wonderful day and, and, and a, and a packed crowd on Central Green. And so we will head to Island Park this particular weekend, and hopefully it's safe and sound for everyone, but we know we will get the crowds. And so please come out and enjoy. Your participation is just as important as anyone being there. When I'm in my office and I hear comments about, "I saw Brent Curry here," or "I saw Dwight Fish there," or "I saw Councilman Hines there," it actually does speak volumes to your participation in what we're doing. So thanks so much for what you do.
Mayor. Let me remiss, I want to thank the Council due to my sister's passing, for all your condolences, cards, your phone calls. It was very much appreciated, I mean, from the entire city. So I want to make sure, I make sure I thank you all for that. Okay, privilege of the floor. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak with regards to anything that was not on agenda tonight? Privilege of the floor. Privilege of the floor. Seeing none. Oh, did you, oh, okay.
Thank you. Louis Lann, Deputy, 1517 Meadow Lane. I want to thank each and every one of you for your willingness to serve. In listening to the State of the City and the Let's Talk Tuesday, I do think it's important to have citizen engagement. That's what makes us thrive, not just in, in volunteering, but being involved here and, and offering our perspectives. I, I did, as I was listening tonight, thought, and I appreciate your questions in regards to the annexation, I think it would be beneficial. I, I had the privilege of attending the Strong Towns Program at the Lerner that was in, in March. And, and one of the takeaways I had from that was, you know, after World War II, cities as a whole, not just Elkhart, have grown and expanded from our downtowns. And it's, it has created an environment where cities have a lot to maintain, but we don't really necessarily have the resources to sustain it. And so the sustaining of it is occurring on the backs of the citizens through taxes. So I appreciate your, your questions in regards to that. It sounds like in regards to this annexation, it's been planned and people have known about it. I do think it would be beneficial if we knew of other planned annexations and, and how that really does impact the citizens and, and what we're paying. I, I know that the city council per se doesn't set property taxes, but in the decisions that we do make, that are made, it can impact the citizens' taxes. And I say that because as I was listening to the Planning Commission, there's another portion that is gonna be annexed into Oslo Township. I think that's land, and it's with seven houses, which we, we need. But I think it would be beneficial to the citizens to know what are the plans, what of areas that are being annexed, and, and how will it impact us? Because that really struck me with the Strong Towns. You spread out, there's a lot of roads to cover and infra- You spread out, there's a lot of roads to cover and infrastructure. The other thing I just wanted to briefly mention, and I know you guys are going to be taking it to the Finance Committee meeting, is the acquisition of the old Chase Building for the Public Safety Building that's been long talked about. And I just want to read a statement as you guys go into discussing it. And this is from Indiana Code 5-14-13, and it states, "A fundamental philosophy of the American constitutional form of representative government is that government is the servant of the people and not their master. Accordingly, it is the public policy of the state that all persons are entitled to full and complete information regarding the affairs of government and the official acts of those who represent them as public officials and employees. Providing persons with the information is an essential function of representative government and an integral part of the routine duties of public officials and employees whose duty it is to protect the information." I understand in regards to the Redevelopment Commission, they're doing hard work. There's some wonderful projects going on. Even with the annexation, you said, "We want responsible annexation. We want responsible redevelopment." I do think there are concerns on the citizens' behalf, some citizens, just as far as transparency and accountability. And I speak with this, it goes back to when Freight Street, they were going to purchase the six parcels of property for the average of the two fair market appraisals at $70,500. And the next thing we know, they were paying $300,000 for it. Once again, that's being paid from the citizens. So also in regards to, and I use that as a historical perspective, it's happened, in regards to the Public Safety Building, you know, that's being purchased, when they announced they were going to be purchasing it, it was for $2.3 million. And it's now come back and they're saying that it's going to be for $3.1 million, which originally the 2.3 was the average of the two fair market appraisals, which is required by code. So just curious why they're not sharing what the average of those two appraisals for the Chase Building was? And I know they can say on the code that those appraisals are for the information of the commission and are not open for public inspection. That's a suggestion. I really encourage you all, as you represent us, I do think it's fair for the citizens to have accurate and transparent information on what they're going to be spending. So I really thank you for serving. I know it's convoluted, they're not easy answers, but I do ask for that transparency and accountability on behalf of all citizens. Thank you very, very much.
Anyone else in the audience? Seeing none, I need to go back to Neighborhood Association's reports.
Mr. President? It's not a report, but the Strong Avenue Neighborhood Association will meet tomorrow, June 4th, at the Triangle, southeast corner of Strong Avenue and Highland Avenue. We welcome everyone. It's going to be at 7 o'clock and our guest will be Mayor Robertson, who'll be giving a mini State of the City.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, the Pemaran Neighborhood Association, we postponed our meeting until next Sunday because I had a church event and my vice president, he had a wedding anniversary, so we decided to just postpone it to next Sunday at 5:00 PM. We'll be meeting outside on the green space there at Dine Hard and Hawthorne Drive if you'd like to attend.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. King.
Thank you. Not about the neighborhood, but I just want to give thanks to Patrick Industries for bringing the tower to tunnel here in Elkhart. Appreciate it. It was awesome. I want to give my thanks to our police and fire. They were in attendance and I know that's an emotional thing to go through something like that and relive it, and I want to give thanks to what you do for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. Hinky.
Well, if we can do that, I'll add one. I just wanted to ask again, it's been over six months now, I've asked for ambulance revenues and wanted to know where we were with that and getting the information to me.
Thank you. Scheduling of committee meetings. The Finance Committee meeting will be June 12th at 5:30. So, June 12th at 5:30. Acceptance of communications. Got a motion from-
Second.
Mr. Mishler, a second from Mr. Crabtree to accept communications. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Motion for adjournment. Got a motion from Mr. Mishler, a second from Mr. Fish. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 We are adjourned.